This conference will now be recorded.
Oh, I don't know if you guys heard that, but this conference will now be recorded, she said.
Yeah, we did.
Okay. Okay. So let's start by talking about the notes and just making sure that everybody went through them. And if you went through them, did you find any places that were incomplete or inaccurate? Or is there anything else that you feel needs to be added for the good of the group? And since there's just, you know, a handful of us, let's avoid using the chat feature if we can. Just go ahead and unmute yourself, talk, and then re-mute yourself. Does that sound good to everybody?
Yeah, that's fine with me. I think it honestly would be slightly easier.
I looked over, just slightly looked over everything real quick. And I didn't see any like big things that were missing, but again, I didn't really look in detail, so.
I went through and looked at it pretty. Sorry. Um, I went through and looked at it pretty in-depth last night and spent a pretty long time taking notes on it and kind of going over it. It seemed that everything was, um, was accurate in there. I think everything was pretty, um, like pretty complete.
I noted a typo on page, um, 31, I think. But I mean, it's pretty obvious because all the other ones say, so like every two hours it says Q or it says G2H and it's supposed to be Q2H. So I, I mean, yeah, that's the only thing really that I noticed.
So one note actually going right along with that information. If, um, in my notes from the PowerPoint, the like QID and QOD and the ones that are like every day or every other day or once a day or whatever are on both like the use and don't use list. So I emailed Barry about that and she just kind of gave a generic answer about, you know, it's going to depend on, you know, where you're working and what their policy is. But she kind of made it sound like they're not going to ask a specific question about that one on the exam. Does anybody have any different understanding than that? Um, I made a couple of other quick notes because I went through. So one thing that is missing, um, we can see if we can find a different way to do it. But at this point, it didn't seem like it made sense to do any extra work for it. But accessing the online practice quizzes on Blackboard in Fundamentals. Um, I went through, I think, all of those this morning. Some things that stuck out to me and I haven't been able to see, are they actually in these notes somewhere or not? But the Allen test was asked about. Um, and the Allen test is essentially like compressing the ulna and the radial arteries. And it's like assessing blood flow to the hand. Um, also the maybe Phalen maneuver, P-H-A-L-E-N. And the tinal sign, T-I-N-E-L sign, um, are both to assess for carpal tunnel syndrome. It seemed highly specific, but it was in their, in their quizzes. Um, the only other thing that I saw that was on the quiz that I didn't think was either pretty easily to access in my own brain or in the notes was that, um, under musculoskeletal assessment, that the shoulders, it talks about this, but that, you know, you can bend your elbows and bring them, bring your hands behind your head and that's external rotation. And then like reaching behind your back, like you would put your bra on is internal rotation. And I say it that way because that's exactly the way that the question was asking it. So if the patient has trouble with internal rotation, she's going to have trouble putting her bra on was, was the answer to the question, I believe.
Hey Jessica.
Yep.
Could you really quickly, sorry, repeat what you said the Allen test was?
Yeah, the Allen test is like compressing the ulna and radial nerves, so in like the wrist. And I can't say that I like got a full understanding of how to do the assessment. It's like holding it for however many seconds, whatever. I don't think we went into those kinds of specifics and the question didn't ask for it. But it's assessing, um, blood flow to the hand. I think they expressed it in the quiz as like the, um, radial artery function.
Okay, thank you.
So obviously, everybody go do the quizzes on your own and make sure, you know, that you know that information. Because hopefully they'll be super kind to us and put all kinds of those questions on the exam, right? Um, next, are there any places in the notes or any concepts that anybody's having particular trouble with that you want to spend any time discussing before we go straight into questions, like practice questions? If not, does anybody have any other like study suggestions or things that they're going to do to prepare other than looking through this information in the practice quizzes?
Um, going back to the Allen's test, I found it on slide 19 in the assessment of peripheral vascular system. And, um, my notes say make fist and then hold the, like both arteries down. And then you let go of either the ulna or the radial. And then you see, um, if the blood flow returns on both, so you do one at a time.
Awesome, thank you.
Um, for the three by five card, if you guys haven't memorized the Glasgow coma scale, I would definitely put it on there because I've seen a lot of like example problems asking how you would grade the person depending on what their, um, like number is. So I just thought I'd add that.
Awesome. And then Autumn sent me a message showing me that, that Allen test, I think, is in our notes somewhere. Sorry, I didn't see it, but thank you, Autumn, for pointing it out. I think I'm going to go back.
Didn't you say the Allen test? With the, where you would like close the arteries and by your hand and then, is that it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we talked about that in class, I remember. So it must've been before spring break because I kind of like did it as she was talking about it.
Your brain works so much better than mine.
That I just remembered doing it, that's why I remember it, but.
Awesome, thank you.
It must've been before spring break then.
Okay, now this exam though, doesn't this exam just cover that first lecture that we missed because she was sick?
No, I think it covers seven through 12, I believe. Week seven through 12, so.
Week seven was the one that we missed, sick.
Yeah.
So yeah, this is all online material.
Yep, so other than that one.
Okay, so maybe, I don't know, maybe that would have been the last. So I think I heard the question from somebody of what else are you putting on your three by five cards?
Yeah, that was me.
Um, Alexis, going through the practice questions, I saw several things about the cranial nerves. And so, um, you know, if you're doing this type of thing, what cranial nerve is that assessing? And I thought I might just put that on there myself.
Okay, thank you.
I've heard from previous classes that this exam is a lot of cranial nerves.
Okay, that's helpful for previous classes, that might be helpful.
I have a question.
What do you?
Um, are we allowed to have the blank piece of paper and the three by five card?
Yes, because the three by five has your notes on it if you want them. The blank piece of paper is what if they passed out at the beginning of last exam? So we could like write down anything we wanted to once the exam started.
Okay, thank you.
So somebody else was about to add something when that question was asked? Maybe? Okay, does anybody else want to add anything about, um, I think the question's in the air right now or what are you putting on your index card? And, you know, have you heard anything else about what might be on this exam from previous cohorts? Can somebody say something so I know you all are still with me and I haven't like lost my connection or something?
I just second that I've heard that there's a lot of cranial nerves. I haven't really heard much else about it though.
Cool. Okay, um, so what I was thinking for questions, so y'all don't have to hear my voice all the time, is, uh, that maybe we could just take turns. So I'll read through the first set of questions, like chapter 20, the first 10 questions. Give everybody a chance to just think of the answer on their own and then read the answer. And then somebody just, you know, chime in if there's any question or if we want to talk more about, you know, why that is or where that comes from or dig deeper into it. Um, and then I will just, you know, select the next person to read so that we don't have to like sit and have awkward pauses or 10 people volunteering. Is everybody okay with that? Or do you want to speak up if you have any objection or other idea?
Sounds good to me.
Cool. Okay, well, let's get started and, um, just somebody, you know, remind me if I forget to scroll on my computer and, and show the questions. Um, because I also have my notes open here so that I can see the answer without showing you guys the answer. Um, so the first question is, "Objective data can be gathered from the patient during which aspects of the physical assessment process?" And this is a select all that apply question. Okay.
Is it everything except A?
I thought it was everything except C. How would you get objective data from, well?
So I'm going to go ahead and, I'm going to go ahead and give the answer on this one. But for this one specifically, if somebody can go to, um, the Evolve website and pull it up and pull up this chapter 20, Health History. Um, this is the, um, the book questions. If you can pull up the, the review answers, um, because this one doesn't make sense to me either. It's all of the above, it's A, B, C, D, and E. Um, the only thing I can think of is that objective data you can get from the patient interview by, in terms of like neurological assessment, I suppose, but I certainly would not have selected that one.
I guess I was leaning towards all that, like all of them purely because the objective data can be as simple as like, you said you had a fever, what was it last time you measured it? And stuff like that, like you can ask what they did at home to measure it or like what medicines do you take at home? And they're naming like specific drugs. I'm not sure if that's exactly what the reasoning is. I'll pull up the Evolve website, but that's just what I was leaning towards anyway.
Okay, awesome. I, it makes sense to me now, but I didn't look at it that way. Let's, Mackenzie, if you're okay with it, we're going to go ahead to number two, just that we don't, this doesn't take us hours and hours. And you can just, you know, chime in after this next question if you find a good answer.
Also kind of feel, go ahead.
Do you want me to say the explanation?
Yes, please.
Okay, it says, "Objective data consists of observed information or signs that can be collected during all stages of the physical assessment process. Even while the patient is answering questions, providing subjective data or symptom information, the nurse observes for physical signs of abnormalities or impairment."
That's all it says.
Okay, makes sense, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, number two, "Which sequence best identifies the order in which the nurse should complete an abdominal assessment?"
D.
Um, okay, so Alexa, let's not answer the question so that everybody has time to get the answer on their own. I'll be the one to give the answer. Does that work for everybody?
Yeah, I'm going to like that.
Thanks.
Can I add something real quick for that question?
Sure.
I remember during her lecture that she said this one is the one that's different than the other ones. So an easy way to remember it after, I mean, she already said the answer or what I think is the answer.
Yeah.
Because you don't want to stir up the stomach before you listen to it.
Yeah, I agree, thank you. So the answer is D. And thank you for providing the rationale. Okay, number three, "During examination of a patient's neck with the bell of the stethoscope, the nurse identifies a carotid bruise. When are bruises audible in the neck?" Do you guys want me to read the options or just give you time to read them on your own?
Time to read them is fine.
Yeah, that's fine, time's good.
Okay, so the answer to number three is C, "When the carotid artery is partially occluded." Does anybody have any questions or concerns there? Okay, "A nurse is preparing to auscultate a patient's chest. In which area should the nurse listen to evaluate the patient's aortic valve?"
Can you scroll down a little bit, please?
Yes, thank you for reminding me. So the answer to number four is A, "The second right intercostal space." Any questions or concerns there? Okay, "Which assessment finding would be most important to document in a patient with known liver disease who has a distended taut abdomen?" Excuse me. So the answer to number five is A, "Abdominal girth."
Um, what is, or do we know what the dentition condition is?
So dentition would be something like with your mouth, like chewing?
Oh, gotcha, gotcha. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, thank you. I read that wrong. I thought it said like distension condition. I was like, I wonder why it's not that one, but now that makes sense.
Right, right, right.
I think that's where I was heading with that too.
Okay, so the nurse notes the presence of, does somebody want to help me out here? Is this just sosis or tosis? How do you say this word?
I think it's ptosis. I think you pronounce both the consonant sounds.
And does some, does somebody want to look that up? What is ptosis? Because I don't know. Does somebody know?
I think it's the drooping of your eyelids.
Thank you, you're right, it is.
Yeah, and it's the drooping.
Okay. And is there, is there a pronunciation there? Is it ptosis?
I kind of said tosis.
Okay, so we're just noticing. Um, okay, so we're noticing drooping when assessing an adult patient's eyes. Which potential cause would be considered of most concern, requiring further evaluation as soon as possible? Okay, so the answer to six is D. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about that one? Okay, number seven, "Which action by a patient with a family history of macular degeneration would demonstrate use of a prevention strategy that has been found to help prevent deterioration of the macula?" So the answer to this is C, "Taking B6 and B12 supplements." Number eight, "The nurse begins the assessment of patient breath sounds and notes diminished breath sounds at the base of the right lung. Which action should the nurse take next?" The answer to eight is B, "Listen to the patient, the base of the patient's left lung." Number nine, "What actions should the nurse take to assess whether a patient with a left above-the-knee amputation has adequate lower extremity circulation to the stump? Select all that apply." So number nine is A, D, and E. Any thoughts or questions there? Number 10, "Which action by the nurse would be most effective in determining whether a patient has muscle hypertonicity?" So the answer to 10 is C. Does anybody have the rationale pulled up for this one? Still?
Yeah, I do.
Can you read that one?
Yeah. It says, "Performing passive range of motion allows the nurse to assess the patient's level of resistance to movement for an abnormal increase in muscle tone. Watching the patient walk provides information on steadiness of gait and posture. Asking the patient to squeeze the nurse's hands assess muscle strength rather than tone and checking the patient's spine for irregular, I cannot say it, irregularities. Assess for kyphosis or lordosis." Sorry about that.
Thank you. Okay, I read that wrong. I was thinking of like hypo, not hyper.
Yeah. All right.
Awesome. Okay, um, I will just call the next person in line. Alexa, do you want to read the next set of questions?
Yeah, I can read. Um, okay, perfect, yeah.
And do you, do you have your sheet with the answers pulled up too? Or do you want me to read the answers?
Um, I do not have the answers pulled up. I can pull them up unless you just want to read them. It doesn't really matter to me.
I don't mind reading them, go ahead.
So, um, number one, "When examining a patient's hearing using the Weber test, the nurse would expect which of the following results if the patient had an obstruction in the right ear?"
Okay, so the answer to one is A. Does somebody have this rationale pulled up? Because I got this one wrong.
Um, I, I'm pretty sure I remember in class them just, I don't remember which one of them taught the lecture, but I just remember one of them saying that if it, it was just, it was just kind of weird that you would have thought it would have been absent in the ear that the obstruction was in. But I just remember them saying it's actually the opposite of what you might think and that it's actually louder in the right ear than it would be in the left. And I just don't remember what the actual rationale is though. I remember them talking about it in class though and saying it's the opposite of like what we would actually think.
I thought it was. Go ahead, Mackenzie. Oh, I was. I thought it was, sorry, there's both of us. Whoops.
There's two Mackenzies in here, isn't there?
Yeah, go ahead, Mackenzie, D.
Okay, sorry, I have the, um, the answer rationale if you want me to read that out loud.
Please.
Okay, um, it says, "The Weber test can be conducted if a patient complains of hearing loss in one ear. Through use of a tuning fork, the advanced practice nurse can determine whether the patient is experiencing conductive or sensory neural hearing loss. If the patient reports hearing sound from the tuning fork in the poor ear, lateralization of the sound to the poor ear has occurred and conductive hearing loss is indicated. If the patient reports lateralization of sound to the good ear, sensory neural hearing loss is the most likely cause." So I think that's a rationale. We might just have to like read 10 times before it makes sense.
Huh, well, it, it sounds to me though that they would have to tell us if the patient. Huh, okay, no.
I think. So if there's an obstruction in the right ear, the, the, the sound waves can't get through. So it's just going to keep like, it's going to have a blockage. And I feel like that's why it would be louder in that ear. You know what I mean? Like it can't, the sound waves can't escape. That's just my, like how I think about it.
That makes perfect sense, Mackenzie, thank you. Anybody else have any questions or concerns there? Okay, go ahead, Alexa.
So number two, "When inspecting a patient with suspected nasal rhinitis, patient assess, oh, sorry, physical assessment of the nurse would most likely reveal what?"
Answer to two is B.
And then number three, "When examining a patient's cornea, which of the following physical assessment findings is a normal occurrence?"
Can you scroll it down a little?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So three is C.
Okay, um, number four, "Which type of lung sounds does the nurse expect to auscultate over most of the lung fields?"
Four is A.
Okay, number five, "A nurse is performing abdominal assessments in the following order: inspection, percussion, palpation, and auscultation. Which effect can influence the nurse's assessment results?"
Okay, five is B.
Dumb question, but can someone, um, define like peristalsis again?
It's the moving of stuff through the tract, isn't that right? Can someone back me up?
Okay, that's what I thought.
It's like the waves of like muscle movement.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, cool. That's what I thought. I just want to make sure I have the right like definition in my head.
Okay, ready for number six? Is everyone ready?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. All right, number six, a nurse is examining a 60-year-old female and notes swollen, hard lymph nodes in the right axilla. After documenting her results and reporting them to the patient's provider, which question would provide further insight into the patient's condition?
Okay, the answer is A.
And number seven, when evaluating a patient's posterior thorax excursion, the nurse notices her right hand does not move when the patient inhales deeply. What is the significance of this result?
Seven is D.
Is the test that they're talking about the one where we put our hands on their back in like a butterfly position and then wait for them to like expand when they take a breath?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, cool.
Okay. Number eight, an older patient complains about blurred vision and halos around lights at nighttime and has been gradually worsening each year. The patient's pupils are cloudy. The nurse recognizes the symptoms the patient is experiencing can be caused by which of the following conditions?
Eight is D. Alexa, you want to pick somebody else?
Um, yeah, whoever, honestly. Does anybody want to read?
I can read.
Okay.
Okay. Question one, an uncooperative 70-year-old male with right-sided paralysis from a recent cerebrovascular accident has to be transferred from the bed to a wheelchair. Which action indicates the best method to transfer this patient?
Okay, the answer to one is C. We do have the rationale in our notes for this. Does anybody want to hear the rationale on this?
Yes, please.
Okay. Do you have it up? Nina, do you want to read it or do you want me to read it?
Can you read it, please?
Sure. So according to safe patient handling algorithms, a full body sling with the assistance of the nurse and the UAP is indicated because the patient is uncooperative and able to bear only partial weight. Lifting a patient manually has the potential to injure the patient and the care providers. The stand and pivot technique is not indicated because the patient is uncooperative. The stand-assist lift is not indicated because the patient is uncooperative. I think that's the part that I failed to see. The uncooperative part.
So if it were to say like cooperative or just a 70-year-old male, do we think it could have been a different answer then? Like, is that what determined the answer basically?
So in the rationale, it sounds like it to me because it says, "The stand and lift, or the stand and pivot technique is not indicated because the patient is uncooperative and the stand-assist lift is not indicated because the patient is uncooperative."
Okay, yes. I was just making sure that's what we were kind of getting at.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good clarification.
Yeah, because I think both of those other ones could be used if he is cooperative, but it also depends on other factors. So I feel like if they ask a question similar to that, the other factors that like influence what this is, that is, would be like involved in the question.
Yeah.
I don't think you probably, you wouldn't probably use a stand-up lift with somebody that has CVA with right-sided paralysis. You need to be able to bear weight, you know, equilaterally for the stand-up lift, but like a stand probably.
Yeah, that's true.
Does anybody recall from the notes? Do we, do we go over like the specific kinds of transfers and such? Is that covered in the, in the lifts and what like the rationale is for using each one?
I think that they were definitely in one of the ATIs.
I know it's.
And so they were all described in there, so I don't know if they were in.
It's not in the study.
I'm almost positive some of them are in, I think, week nine's PowerPoint on the patient positioning and transfer mobility section of it. It's, some of it is also in the ATI, but it doesn't go as in-depth in the ATIs I expected it would. It's almost more in-depth in her like PowerPoint that she posted.
Okay, cool. I'll make a note to go back. Nina, why don't you go ahead and keep reading?
Okay, after instruction, which action by a patient who can bear weight on both feet indicates an understanding of the proper use of crutches?
Okay, the answer for two is B as in boy. Does anybody want to talk about the rationale for that one? Okay, go ahead, Nina.
Question three, what bony promenades are at greatest risk for skin breakdown on a patient who is restricted to bedrest and placed in the side of lane, lying position? Select all that apply.
Okay, so three is B, C, and D. Does anybody want to talk about that one?
Is it their ears because they're flushed? Like when you lay on the side, it like kind of presses your, like the top of your earlobe to your skull, so that would rub together?
Yes, that's how I thought of it. Like they're stuck in bed, so you know, they're laying on one side or the other and it can cause breakdown on the ear.
Okay.
And that's what the rationale says. My, I only, I didn't choose that because I didn't think of it as the bony prominence, but maybe just because it's cartilaginous, it still applies.
Plus, I think obviously if you're on your side, anything that would even be touching the bed possibly, like as long, if it was sitting there for a few hours, I think that could ultimately have some kind of skin breakdown. So I think almost like if you're laying on your back, that would be anything on your back, your, all of that stuff. And like the bottoms of your feet and everything, I just think it, anything that's touching the, the bed or whatever for a long period of time could cause breakdown. If that makes sense.
Is everyone ready for the next question?
Yep.
Yes.
Um, question four, which area of the central nervous system has most likely sustained damage if a patient exhibits a lack of coordination and an unsteady gait after a traumatic head injury?
Four is D.
Jessica, could you scroll down a little bit, please?
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Question five, a nurse is providing patient education on the prevention, prevention of osteoporosis. Which important fact should the nurse include in the teaching care plan?
Five is A.
Question six is what nursing intervention would be most effective in preventing flaccidity in a hospitalized patient? If I said that wrong, I'm sorry.
Nope, you're good.
Can we define that word, flaccidity?
Um, the, the place where you most often would hear the word flaccid is a flaccid penis. Sorry, guys. Relaxed, limp. So the answer is A. So basically it's saying that you don't want somebody to lose muscle mass.
It's like the complete opposite of rigidity. Like, so if someone's hand is super, super rigid and like tight, flaccidity is like the complete opposite. It's like drooping and hanging and they don't really have muscle mass or movement in it.
There's an example without a penis. Good job. Okay, let's, um, let's try to move along more quickly, just so that we're not here all stinking day. Um, but just understanding that we're going to, if you have a question, go ahead and interrupt. Otherwise, let's move just a little bit faster if everybody is okay with that.
Can you scroll again, please?
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, identifying all nursing interventions that are necessary when caring for a quadriplegic patient injured two years earlier in a motor, motor vehicle accident. This is a select all that apply.
Okay, so the answers here are A, B, and D.
Everyone good?
Hey, Jessica, I have a quick question. Are you able to edit the document as we go? Like, could you highlight once we go through it, the answers? Or no?
Wait, ask again?
Like, could you highlight the answers once we go through it? Or no?
Um, so the answers are all in the document. They're just after the questions?
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Uh huh.
All right, question eight asks, which discovery found during an admission assessment of a patient transferred from a long-term care facility does the nurse recognize as the result of immobility?
So the answer is A.
Question nine asks, which nursing diagnosis is a top priority for a patient who is one-day status post hip replacement?
Nine is C.
Question 10 asks, after application of sequential compression devices on a patient, what assessment finding is essential for the nurse to include in documentation?
Okay, 10 is B. And then these ones here are all of the answers with the supporting rationale. Nina, do you want to pick somebody else to read next, please?
I'm sure. Does anyone want to read in particular right now?
Oh. Alexis, I think I heard you. Yeah, I can go. Okay, cool. Thank you.
All right. Number one, which assessment finding would indicate that a patient has hemiparesis?
The answer to one is D.
Okay, number two says, what information would the nurse include when teaching a patient about deep vein thrombosis prevention?
Two is D.
Three is, what nursing intervention would be the first priority to prevent constipation in an immobile patient?
Three is D.
And then could you scroll?
I just remember reading somewhere, yes. I just remember reading somewhere, and maybe it was a question in a different form that was just saying dietary interventions are always first, which increased fluid is part of that.
Okay, four says, which patient care activity can be delegated by the registered nurse to unlicensed assistive personnel?
The answer to four is D.
Okay, five is, following hip surgery, a trochanter roll is used to prevent what type of movement?
What is a trochanter? Sorry.
That's okay. I'm, I'm going to go ahead and read the rationale on this one. So five is D. So the, a trochanter roll is placed along the greater trochanter of the femur. Remember the trochanter is like the, like the prominence, the, the nubs at the end, and out, the outer aspect of the leg to prevent external rotation of the hip when a patient is lying in supine position. A pillow is placed in between patient's legs when log rolling or in the sidelined position to prevent internal rotation. Supination and pronation refer to the body's position of face up and face down.
Okay, six is, to prevent injury to a patient during log rolling, which action by the nurse is most important?
Well, we just gave the answer to this one, didn't we? Six is C. Um, I'm going to go ahead and read the rationale on that one just because there's some more information kind of like from the last one. So a pillow is positioned between a patient's legs during log rolling to maintain spinal alignment. Ankle foot orthotics are used to prevent foot drop and would not be indicated during log rolling. A draw sheet is critical during log rollovers to prevent potential injury to both caregivers and patients in most cases. Side rails are lowered when a caregiver is positioned next to the side of the bed so that the patient can be reached without back strain to the nurse. that the patient can be reached without back strain to the nurse.
Okay. And seven is, a nurse has provided discharge instructions to a patient and family. What statement by the family would indicate an understanding of methods to prevent complications from immobility?
Seven is A. Just about adequate protein intake. Do you want to choose somebody else to go next? Does anybody want to go next?
I can read next.
Sorry.
Okay. Question one, a nurse is caring for a client who has been sitting in a chair for one hour. Which of the following complications is the greatest risk to the client?
I think we skipped the multiple response questions for this one.
Thank you, thank you. Oh, yeah. I see. There we go. Is that where we're at? Sorry, Hannah, can you read those first?
Yep, that's fine. So, one, bones function and what important roles within the body? Select all that apply.
So one is B, C, D.
So two is, what actions by the nurse are critical to ensure patient safety? Again, select all that apply.
Okay, and the answers are B, D, and E. And then Hannah, do you want to keep going for these ones as well?
Yeah, I can do that. I'll read one again. A nurse is caring for a client who has been sitting in a chair for one hour. Which of the following complications is the greatest risk to the client?
And the answer is C.
Question two, a nurse is caring for a client who is post-operative. Which of the following interventions should the nurse take to reduce the risk of thrombus development? Thrombus development, sorry.
Okay, two is B and E.
Three, a nurse is planning care for a client who is on bedrest. Which of the following interventions should the nurse plan to implement?
Three is A.
Four, a nurse is evaluating a client's understanding of the use of a sequential compression device. Which of the following client statements indicates client understanding?
Four is B.
Five, a nurse is instructing a client who has had an injury of the left lower extremity about the use of a cane. Which of the following instructions should the nurse include? Select all that apply.
The answers here are A, B, and D. Hannah, do you want to just read these next five as well, please?
Yep, I can do that. One, a nurse is caring for a client who will perform fecal occult blood testing at home. Sorry if I pronounced that wrong. Which of the following information should be included when explaining the procedure to the client?
The answer is D, as in dog.
Two, a nurse is providing dietary teaching for a client who reports constipation. Which of the following foods should the nurse recommend? Select all that apply.
Two is B. I would've said yogurt, though, because it's full of probiotics, but it's not the right answer.
Wait, the answer is just B?
Yes.
Interesting. Okay. Three, the nurse is assessing a client who has had diarrhea for four days. Which of the following findings should the nurse expect? Select all that apply.
Three is B, C, and D. Does anybody know why elevated temperature is part of that?
I was gonna ask someone to read the rationale for this, because I did not realize constipation or diarrhea can be, like, associated with certain things like this.
So, I understand... For infection, is that why you said... Somebody said fever?
That would be my rationale. I mean, you know, a natural body response to infection is elevated core temperature.
Right. Does somebody want to look in the...
Okay, that makes sense.
I know if you have, like, dehydration from diarrhea and don't have adequate, like, electrolyte balance and, like, fluid balance and all of that, that'll cause, like, elevated temperature, because you don't have the normal, like, fluid ranges.
Yeah. And then poor skin trigger, that's a sign of dehydration as well.
Okay.
Am I ready to move on, or do you want me to wait until someone finds their, like, actual rationale?
What chapter? Oh, this is 43. I'm looking at the wrong one, because I have the ATI book, and I'm like, wait a second, that's not right. Okay. Prolonged diarrhea, dehydration, expect the client to have an increased temperature. So whoever said that was right. Dehydration can increase temperature. I don't know why. So I'm gonna look that up later personally.
You'd think that you wouldn't want to increase the temperature, because that would make you sweat, which would get rid of more liquid.
Yeah. Your body... Yeah. Your body kind of goes into shock. I get dehydrated really easy, and they've explained it to me before. It's kind of confusing. But from what I got, I don't know if this is right, but like I was saying, the electrolyte balance, they said gets messed up, and that throws, like, all of your, like, obviously sodium levels and all of that off, and your body kind of just gets confused. That's my understanding. I'm not sure, like, what the full rationale is for it, but...
Okay. Well, let's move on, and we all just know we can go dig into that and maybe post an answer on Facebook or something, if somebody comes up with something good.
Okay. So, number four. While a nurse is administering a cleansing enema, the patient reports abdominal cramping. Which of the following actions should the nurse take?
Okay, four is B. If they weren't multiple choice, though, I would've said every other place it seems like just said lower.
Yeah, like slow.
I think it's diff... With a cleansing enema. I think that's the difference, because I think other ones you're supposed to lower, but I think with a cleansing one, that was different.
Okay.
I might be wrong, though. That's just kind of what I remember from the ATI for... I think it was the one we had to do for lab.
Yeah.
Can you scroll down just a little bit?
Sure.
Here, okay. Okay. A nurse is preparing to administer a cleansing enema to an adult in preparation for a diagnostic procedure. Which of the following steps should the nurse take? Select all that apply.
So this one is A, B, and C. Hannah, do you want to pick somebody else to read?
Again, if there's anyone who wants to, you're more than welcome.
I can read.
Go for it.
So, number one asks, a nurse is caring for a client who followed a nursing home. The client is oriented to person, place, and time, and can follow directions. Which of the following actions should the nurse take to decrease the risk of another fall? And select all that apply.
So one is C, D, E.
Sorry, anybody have any question for one?
No, I was just gonna say that if we decide to do this again and ask people to contribute, I'm gonna ask to always include the rationale, because I think it's super helpful.
Agreed. All right, we'll move on to number two. Number two says, a nurse manager is reviewing with nurses on the unit in the care of a client who has a seizure. Which of the following statements by a nurse requires further instruction?
Two is B.
All right. I'll move on to number three. A nurse observes smoke coming from under the door of the staff's lounge. Which of the following actions is the nurse's priority?
And the answer to three is C.
All right. And then moving forward to number four, if we can scroll up so we can read the answer choices.
Thank you.
Thank you. A nurse is caring for a client who has a history of falls. Which of the following actions is the nurse's priority?
The answer is A.
All right. And number five asks, a nurse discovers a small paper fire in a trash can in a client's bathroom. The client has been taken to safety, and the alarm has been activated. Which of the following actions should the nurse take?
Five is D. And do you want to go ahead to chapter 13 as well?
Sure. That's fine. Great. 13, number one, a nurse is providing discharge instructions to a client who has a prescription for oxygen use at home. Which of the following information should the nurse include? Select all that apply.
The answers are B, C, and E.
Okay. Moving on to number two, unless anybody has any objection. A nurse educator is presenting a module on basic first aid for newly licensed home health nurses. The client who has heat stroke will have which of the following?
Two is A.
All right. Number three, a nurse educator is conducting a parent class for new guardians of infants. Which of the following statements made by a participant indicates understanding?
Three is D.
All right. Moving on to number four, if we can scroll up again.
Oh, yeah.
A home health nurse is discussing the dangers of carbon monoxide poisoning with a client. Which of the following information should a nurse include?
Four is D.
And the last question for chapter 13, number five, a home health nurse is discussing the dangers of food poisoning with a client. Which is the... Which is the form information that should... The nurse should include? I think it's just, what is the information that a nurse should include? And select all that apply.
And the answers are B, C, E. And the answers are B, C, E. Do you want to keep going or choose somebody else?
Um, if anybody else really wants to read, I can go on somebody else.
I can read.
Okay.
Um, a patient is being discharged from the hospital with a new ileostomy. The patient expresses concern about caring for the ostomy. Before hospital discharge, it is most important for the nurse to coordinate members of which hu- which members of the healthcare team.
The answer for one is B.
The nurse is assigned the care of a patient for whom a cleansing enema has been ordered. Which information is most important for the nurse to know before administration of the enema?
Two is D.
To prevent constipation in an inactive patient, which early intervention should the nurse implement? Select all that apply.
Three is A, C, D, E.
And then if we could scroll.
Oh, yeah.
While performing an abdominal assessment on an unconscious patient, the nurse notes presence of an ostomy. The fecal output is liquid inconsistency with a pungent odor from the stoma that is located in the upper right quadrant of the abdomen. What type of ostomy does the patient have?
Four is D. Do you mind if I read the rationale on that one?
Go for it.
An ascending colostomy meets the description of fecal output of liquid consistency and with a pungent odor, as well as location of the stoma in the upper right quadrant of the abdomen. Descending colostomies produce increasingly formed stool. An ileostomy will produce liquid stool, but with less odor, its enzyme activity is not present. That's the part that I was missing. Okay, I'm good if everybody else is.
The teaching plan for a patient with diarrhea should include which intervention?
Five is A.
The nurse knows that the teaching for a patient who is recently diagnosed with constipation has been effective if the patient's meal request specifies which food choice.
Six is D.
A forty-year-old patient complains of four days of frequent loose stools with abdominal cramping. What is the priority nursing diagnosis for this patient?
Seven is B.
A patient is scheduled, or sorry, can we scroll?
Oh, yep.
A patient is scheduled for a colonoscopy. After pre-procedure teaching by the nurse, the patient demonstrates understanding when he makes which statement?
Eight is C.
Which nursing intervention is included for a patient experiencing diarrhea?
Nine is C. I'd like to read the rationale on that one. Um, fiber is encouraged in patients with diarrhea, wait. Oh, which is included. Okay, sorry, I was just reading backwards. I was probably the only one with problem there.
Um, and can we scroll for number ten? Thank you. When adminis- when administering a cleansing enema, which techniques should the nurse use? Select all that apply.
Ten is A, D, E.
Then does anyone want to jump in and read or I can keep reading? I don't mind.
Keep it moving.
To best determine the patient's competency in changing an ostomy appliance, what does the nurse ask the patient to do?
One is C.
A patient with a history of diarrhea is seen in the clinic. Which nursing intervention is most essential to include in the patient's plan of care?
Two is A. Let's just checking for dehydration.
And then if we could scroll. A patient is scheduled for an upper GI series. Wouldn't you, which information is most important for the nurse to obtain before the procedure?
Three is D.
Which discharge instruction does the nurse provide to the patient following a colonoscopy?
Four is C.
Select the most appropriate goal for a patient experiencing diarrhea related to antibiotic use.
Five is D.
What would be included in teaching for a patient who will be discharged with a prescription for a laxative? Jessica, could you scroll, please?
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
Thank you.
Six is C.
The nursing instructor is teaching information about constipation in the elderly. Which statement from the student indicates a need for further ed- instruction on the topic?
Seven is A.
Now if you can scroll for number eight. Prior to discharge, the nurse teaches the patient the proper techniques for applying an ostomy pouch. When evaluating the teaching, the nurse observes the patient apply a new ostomy pouch without cleansing the skin underneath. Which actions would the nurse implement following this patient's return demonstration? Select all that apply.
Eight is A, C, D.
All right, the nurse is teaching. Yeah, go for it.
I can read again. Okay. All right, number one, the nurse is teaching a patient about how to take a subling- sublingual nitroglycerin tablet. Which statement by the patient best demonstrates an understanding of the teaching?
So one is C.
Okay, number two, the nurse is caring for a critically ill patient. What are the contraindications for administering medications by the oral route for this type of patient? Sorry, select all of the why.
Two is A, B, E.
Okay, number three. The nurse is in a patient room ready to administer a new medication for, to the patient. Which action best demonstrates awareness of safe, proficient nursing practice?
Three is A. I was kind of hoping that was a select all that apply because.
Oh, I know. Yeah, I was kind of thinking the same thing. I guess A maybe would be like the quote-unquote most, right? I have questions like those. I agree, Jessica.
I have the rationale pulled up and it says that um, determining the medication should be completed prior to entering the patient room.
Okay, so all the rest would have to be done before you're, okay, I guess that makes sense.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You want to um, scroll for me, please, Jessica?
Thank you.
Okay, number four. A patient has been using herbal medication as a part of her daily routine. Which action should the nurse take? Select all that apply.
So four is A, D, E. Um, let's, let's skip over number five and unless anybody really wants to do calculations on this call.
Hmm, nah. Okay, number six. The healthcare provider um, provides a transdermal medication. The nurse understands what feature of the ger- uh, I'm sorry. The nurse understands what feature of the transdermal route.
Six is C.
Um, number seven. The nurse is caring for a patient who is unstable to hold a cup or a spoon. How would the nurse administer oral medication to this patient?
Seven is C. Are you there, Alexa?
Yeah, I am. Do you want to, I can see the question. Answers.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I'm trying.
Number eight, right, yeah, yeah. What should the nurse do first when preparing to administer medications to a patient?
Eight is B.
Okay. I'm gonna move quickly after that one since we already had a question just like that one. Um, number nine, the nurse is preparing a plan of care for a patient. What is the most appropriate goal for a patient related to medications?
Nine is A.
Uh, number ten. The nurse reviews a primary care provider's orders and finds that the medication amount is greater than the standard dose. What should the nurse do?
Ten is C.
And I can keep going unless somebody else wants to take over. Doesn't matter.
Sure, go for it.
Okay. Number one, the nurse is selecting a site to administer a medication by the intramuscular route. The nurse chooses to avoid which site due to high risk for injury?
One is C.
Do we have a rationale for this one? Is this like which, like just the difference between ventral gluteal and dorsal gluteal?
So um, the ventral gluteal is like more on the hip, I believe, and dorsal gluteal is kind of like more like on the back. There's just a higher risk for, I think, hitting the nerve there.
Okay, that makes sense. Okay, cool. All right, number two, the home health nurse is called for a consultation on a patient with memory problems who is having difficulty remembering to take multiple medications prescribed to be taken throughout the day. What can the nurse do to help the patient remember to take the medications as prescribed?
Two is A.
Number three. The nurse understands that medication absorption is affected by administration route. Which route for medications has the fastest absorption rate?
Three is D.
Okay, number four. What action does the nurse take immediately after instilling a prescribed eye drop into the patient's eye?
Four is D. I'm circling this one for myself to go back.
Do we know what the inner, that area is, intercanthus area? I don't know if I remember seeing that.
I have it pulled up again if you want me to read it.
Please.
Okay.
Okay, it says pressing gently on the intercanthus of the eye after instilling eye drops prevents the medication from entering the lacrimal duct for systemic absorption. Do you want to keep going or?
No, so I. Yeah, that's just the inner, you know, the inner corner of your eye.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Actually touched there, though, but go ahead.
Yeah, I did, I felt the same. Okay, number five. Um, which statement by the patient about herbs and prescription medications demonstrates understanding of education by a nurse?
Five is C.
And Jessica, can you please scroll? Okay, number six. Um, before administering a dose of a prescribed medication, the nurse finds an unlabeled filled syringe in the patient's medication drawer. What action by the nurse is most appropriate?
And six is A. And six is A?
Again, I can.
Anybody else want to read?
If necessary, anybody else want to read?
I can read.
Okay, cool, thanks.
Uh, number one, a hospital has just implemented the use of electronic health records. While learning to use this new system, the nurse realize realizes that the EHR may do which of the following?
One is B?
If you go ahead and scroll for me. Which statement best contributes to the nurse's documentation of assessment of prior, of patient status? In the patient's medical chart?
Two is C?
Uh, number three, a patient requests a copy of his medical record. What is the correct response by the nurse?
Three is C?
Number four, a patient's sister comes to visit and asks to read the patient's medical records. What is the best response by the nurse?
Four is B?
Number five, which are reasons that accurate documentation and medical record is important? Select all that apply.
Five is A, B, C, E?
Number six, which note is an example of the S in S-bar?
Six is A?
Uh, go ahead and scroll for me, Jessica. Thank you. Uh, which attributes are important in nursing documentation? Select all that apply.
And seven is B, C, D, E?
Okay, number eight, when should administered medications be documented?
Eight is B?
Number nine, what is an advantage of the use of paper medical records?
Nine is D?
What is the, uh, number 10, sorry, what is a purpose of handoff report?
And 10 is A?
That was the last one for that section, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so I can continue reading the next section, I don't mind.
Thanks.
Okay, number one, the nurse notices a nursing staff member from another unit is reading the chart of one of the unit's patients. What action by the nurse is most appropriate?
One is D?
Number two, the nurse finds a patient on the floor beside the bed. After doing an assessment and ensuring that the patient is safe and not injured, what action does the nurse take next?
Two is A?
Number three, the nursing student asks the faculty member why the electronic health record is so important. What response by the faculty member is best?
Three is D? Really? Okay, does anyone have that rationale up by chance?
I do. Um, it says the electronic health record includes documentation over time from inpatient and outpatient sources. It is a longitudinal record of a patient's encounters with the healthcare system. Laboratory data and other test results are available in inpatient and outpatient settings so that care decisions can be made. Adoption of an EHR system eventually produces major cost savings through gains and productivity and error reduction, which ultimately improves patient health status. However, they are costly to create, they only allow both inpatient and outpatient providers to access the record. Research is certainly easier with computerized records, but paper charts have been used for data collection too.
If that makes sense. Little bit.
Okay, if you could scroll for number four. Number four, the impact of computerized provider order entry on the medical record has been which of the following?
Four is A?
Doctor handwriting's bad. Five, the registered nurse understands that which of the following is inappropriate to document?
Five is A?
And then go ahead and scroll for number six. Number six, charting by exception means which of the following?
Six is C?
Number seven, a new graduate nurse learns that the facility controls access to electronic health records by which of the following?
Seven is A?
Number eight, the nursing student learns that which of the following is the guideline for nursing documentation?
Eight is C?
Okay, uh, number one in the multiple response section is legal issues related to medical records include which of the following? And this is a select all that apply.
One is A, B, C?
Number two, the registered nurse knows that medical record documentation is important for which reasons? Select all that apply.
Two is A, B, C, E?
Uh, number one, when does teaching a patient about fire safety? Which activity does the nurse know is the leading cause of fire-related death?
Some typos there. One is A?
Uh, two, which measures can the nurse teach to prevent poisoning of children? Select all that apply.
Two is A, C, D?
Number three, which restraint-free alternative is best for the nurse to use for an 84-year-old patient after hip replacement? Who has confusion and incontinence?
Three is B?
And number four, the nurse is performing a fall risk assessment on a newly admitted patent, patient. Which finding is a greater known risk factor for falls?
Four is B, which is not what I would have chosen.
I would have picked C. Interesting.
Lauren, do you have the rationale there by chance?
Yeah, it's a little long, so if you, I'm just telling when you want me to stop. So it says urinary incontinence, a known factor that increases fall risk, is included on the Johns Hopkins Hospital Fall Assessment Tool and the Hendrick to Fall Risk Model. Although the effects of specific medications may increase the risk for falls, the medication aspirin alone does not. Come on.
I think you can stop there.
Okay.
So is it really just like people are just rushing to get to the bathroom? Is it that simple?
I guess so, because it says malnutrition doesn't. I don't know why.
That's kind of what.
If they're incontinent and they have peed on the floor, it's wet now and now they slip.
Yeah, true.
But I think multiple comorbidities makes more sense still, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm with you there.
Yeah.
Because like, isn't it when we do the Brayden scale, they're like for fall assessment? It's like if you already have one or two of those things, your score is like ridiculously high already.
That's kind of where I was coming from when I answered it.
Well, I guess now we know.
Yeah.
Is everybody good for me to move on to number five?
Yep.
Okay, number five, the nurse is aware that patients are being safety advocates when they do which of the following?
Five is C?
Number six, an elderly client residing in the community with cardiopulmonary compromise and impaired ability to perform activities of daily living presents safety concerns to the nurse. Which is the greatest concern?
Good lord, all of them. Okay, it says six is B?
Really?
I definitely agree, but I mean, I guess.
I feel like choking. Okay. Well, I guess fall risks come before everything else.
Yeah.
Number se- unless you wanted to read the rationale?
Does it say anything?
I can if you want me to.
Sure.
Um, it says a patient with cardiopulmonary compromise may exhibit symptoms such as shortness of breath leading to subsequent activity intolerance and difficulty performing activities of daily living. An individual may be unable to safely get off and on a toilet leading to an increased risk for falling, which is the primary concern of the nurse.
Again, I think we just have to accept it, right?
Yeah. All right, number seven, what other healthcare professionals should the nurse consult first when a patient has difficulties with daily living such as bathing and dressing, and why?
Seven is A?
Okay, number eight, a 56-year-old man who has been staying at a cabin while hunting arrives at the emergency department with complaints of dizziness, lightheadedness, and nausea. Which, uh, what does the nurse initially suspect?
D, carbon monoxide?
Can you scroll, please?
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry. Which activity would be most appropriate for the registered nurse to delegate to unlicensed assistive personnel?
Nine is C?
When working with radiation diagnostics or treatments, which preventative measure should be followed to avoid exposure? Select all that apply.
And this is all of them.
That makes sense?
We're almost there, guys.
Okay, uh, number one, which patient appears to be at greatest risk for falls?
One is C?
Number two, a new nurse is caring for a patient who is restrained. Which action shows a good understanding of caring for this patient?
Two is D? If somebody has the rationale, I just read it if there's good information in that, please. If not, I've circled it, I can go back and look myself.
It just says that the restraint should be removed ASAP when the, the patient is no longer a danger to themselves. I don't. the patient is no longer a danger to themselves. I don't-
Okay.
I mean. Yeah, it says the patient also needs to be checked every hour to ensure that basic needs are met and that the order should be renewed every twenty-four hours. That's pretty much it.
Oh, okay, I guess-
So the other things are like little things, like an hour instead of thirty minutes sort of thing?
Okay.
Uh, number three, when a fire occurs in a healthcare agency, in which sequences should actions be performed?
Three is C.
Number four, for a school-aged child who enjoys riding a bicycle, which is the priority nursing diagnosis?
No, this is a dumb question. A.
Uh, number five, select the most appropriate side rail regimen for an elderly patient who intermittently calls for assistance.
Five is C. Is there a rationale on that one? I guess I don't remember reading about why to put more side rails up like this.
Yeah, it says while two side rails are supportive of some independent bed mobility, elevating a third rail can serve as an additional support, which is weird because that makes it seem like they're restraining them. That's what they would say. You know what I mean?
Right, I guess as long as it's not four, it's not restraint?
Yeah, I guess so.
Yeah, I think it has to be four to be a restraint, if I remember right. But at first I was like, it can't be C or D, because I didn't think it could be three either.
I remember them saying, somebody, one of our CLAs, I think when we were talking about this, is like, it's a hundred percent definitely a restraint at four, but you would only use three in like certain situations, like not very often.
Okay.
Like, pretty much-
I think maybe they're using three on this because the first two rails will help him like pull himself towards the rail that's down towards the bathroom, and then the other rail just prevents him from rolling off the bed.
Okay.
I mean, we just have-
Two more sections to get through, short ones.
Just go ahead and scroll and I can keep reading. I don't mind.
Thank you.
No problem. Okay, number one, which behavior by the nurse during medication administration is most likely to cause a medication error? Select all that apply, sorry.
Um, so one, it's A and C.
Okay, number two, uh, which results from a form of pollution? Select all that apply.
Two is B, C, E.
B, C, E.
I'll have to go back and look at those personally.
That was weird. I feel like a lot of them didn't match up, like the noise pollution in the lungs. That would probably be air pollution.
Right.
So maybe that would help with process of elimination, but they were still weird.
Yeah.
Does anybody want to hear the rationale on that? Are we okay with just looking it up on our own?
I'm okay with just looking it up.
Okay, number three, how can the nurse reduce procedure-related events? Select all that apply.
So three is B, C, D, E.
Number four, which clients present concerns for suffocation to the nurse? Select all that apply.
Okay, guys, what exactly is the quote-unquote choking game?
I was just- They'll choke themselves and like they'll basically like hang themselves to get high. Because if you cut off the air supply to your brain, it gives you like a euphoric state.
Wow, never-
It's a, you're at a high risk for like accidentally hanging yourself when you do it, because most kids will like play it by themselves, quote-unquote.
Wow, I did not know that. Okay, thank you for clarification.
I learned about it on Criminal Minds.
No kidding. Oh my goodness, okay.
That's also why the old lady here would have also chosen B, because kids can be dumb, and I still cut up my kids' hot dogs, just saying. They're nitrate-free, for the record, but go ahead.
So is it A, C, D, and E?
Uh, just A, C, D.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so number one, a nurse knows that which of the following is the correct way to use a reflex hammer?
So one is C.
Did you say C as in cat? Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, number two, after doing a reflex test on a patient, the patient's tendon was very brisk and hyperactive. The nurse would document the reflex on what grade?
Two is D.
Number three, what spinal levels does the bicep reflex test evaluate? Oh, bicep, there we go. Select all that apply.
Okay, now for the record, Barry said we did not need to know these.
Yeah, okay.
Um. But the answer is three, I'm sorry, the answer for three is A and D.
D is on the next page, actually, so if you could scroll a little bit.
Yeah.
Okay, so C five, and you're fine. Okay, what reflex, number four, what reflex test evaluates the function of the spinal levels S1 and S2?
So that's D, the Achilles reflex?
Five, a nurse knows that in a baby, a normal reflex response when testing the superficial reflex would be?
C, dorsiflexion?
Six, a nurse is assessing all of a patient's reflex. When doing the Upten test, the patient's leg did not move. Using critical thinking, a nurse realizes what is most likely wrong?
Six is B.
Uh, just go ahead and scroll for the answers on number seven. I can read the question, but I can't see all the answers. Seven, a nurse knows that a positive Babinski response in adults could be caused by? Select all that apply.
Seven is A, B, and D.
Okay, number eight, when a patient's reflexes are hyperactive, hyperreflexia, what are most likely impaired?
So eight is A. Okay, so we got it through all the questions. Does anybody want to go over anything in particular in the notes or the questions or sections or anything?
Um, I was just gonna ask where those last questions came from, because I don't have them in the documents that I'm looking at.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Mine either.
You know what, somebody, oh, yeah, um, sorry, somebody sent me some questions afterward. So I think these might be questions that somebody made up. Um, yes, somebody, so whoever did the section did. So I can send you this updated document if you think it would be helpful.
Uh, yes, please.
What did you see that Barry said we don't need to know?
So a lot of what's in that last section, so knowing the spinal levels and what they coordinate to.
Okay, thank God, because, okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, okay, so in addition to like leaving that last question there, that if anybody has anything they want to go over, was this helpful for everybody? Do we want to do something like this again? What should we do the same? Should we do different?
No, I think this was wonderful. I think that this allows us, uh, I don't, I mean, I think it's great that Bonnie um, does reviews and things for us, but I want to say that maybe, you know, over the years, everything, it's updated, especially now that we're doing class a completely different way. I feel like they would like update things, and I think that we went way more in-depth than she ever has on her specific reviews. Um, I think this is wonderful. I think all of the details that were in the review guide, I think that's really the aim of the study. Um, I think going over, I think all of it in general is very great, so I like.
Somebody said some pretty heavy background noise. There it went.
Thank you for making this possible, Jessica. This was super helpful.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I think for me, the biggest part of it that's helpful, because, I mean, I could read through these questions on my own, um, but certainly being able to talk to it or whatever, but for, talk about it. But for me, it's like having a time that I'm committed to showing up and actually doing this. That's not like the day before the test is probably the most helpful part to me.
That's exactly what I was thinking. It's just forcing me to study earlier than I usually do.
Yes, I agree.
It keeps me accountable. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah. Um, is there, I guess, is going through the questions, do you think that's probably the most helpful way to do it? Or do you think we would do any better to be going through the notes instead?
Honestly, I think it's better to be going through the questions like as a group, because that's where you might need more clarification. I went through the notes on my own like beforehand, and I, I think that was a good way, because that kind of encourages you to study on your own, and this is like your quote-unquote review. Like, it's like a practice exam.
I agree. Plus, the notes is more straightforward aspect of it, so we can do that on our own and read that as many times as we want. I think discussing the questions is, you know, there might not be questions we don't understand, and some, like, other people are able to explain certain things that they've gone through or whatever.
I think hearing people's interpretations of the questions and how they got to their answer is helpful than just your own, because if you're sitting there thinking like, you know, why would urinary incontinence be a main reason for falls? And then you're like, well, they peed on the floor, so the floor is what? Uh, you know, you wouldn't necessarily think of that unless other people, you know, mentioned something like that. But then like, I think that it, um, it lets you know which sex and sections you need to look over in the notes more too, because you figure out based on other people's answers, like what you did poorly on.
Absolutely.
Cool, um, so going forward, like I said, I think if we, if we make a review like this again, one thing I don't think I said out loud was, um, we'll do Google Docs, and maybe just set it up ahead of time, so everybody has a section where they're working, but then they can add their own information, and it'll just make things easier for the person compiling it. Um, but I think if we're going to continue to do this, we need to all make sure that we are actually looking it over and thinking critically about it, and then announcing to the group if we see something that we think is incomplete or inaccurate or whatever. So let's just not like be lazy, just because it's there, I think, is what I'm trying to say in a nice way. Um, and then also including the rationale for any of the questions and answers. Is there anything else that you guys would like to see different for a next time kind of a review?
So I'm just kind of thinking out loud here, not necessarily for next time, but we- Okay, do people use Google Drive enough to like constitute making a folder that we can share with everyone?
I operate for by myself. I use it on a daily basis.
Okay, because I can, or if someone else can make a folder, and we can share all like the important information in it. Um, so like I was planning on uploading the video to YouTube and having it in there, but I can have, like, I can upload it to a Google for, like, folder, and then people can like put things in as they want and continue editing docs as you, as they want. Is that something we'd be interested in?
I like that idea a lot.
Yeah, one thing for that, though, to make it like even more accessible and maybe apply it to other classes too, is maybe if we had like a Google Drive, um, folder that just everybody in BSN had access to, but maybe it wasn't a folder, maybe it was just actually a drive, um, that one person like creates and then shares access to, like, for viewing for everybody else, or maybe like adding new documents to. That way, um, like, obviously, like, no cheating materials, none of that crap, but like all study materials, all, um, like, checkoff sheets. If you have some fun mnemonic devices, help you memorize things or kind of help you along. Maybe we can all add like, and have it sectioned off by class, and then it carries us through BSN one through four. So we can have like a folder for BSN one, but then subsequent folders for, um, patho, fundamentals, research, et cetera. Does that make sense?
Okay, I'm secretary of my organization right now, and I literally manage the whole Google, like, Google Drive for that, so like, I got this.
Yes, that's kind of what I'm replicating, because Capitola, like, we each-
Yeah.
Has one, and then we have like, okay, here's officer transitions, here's this and that, so it just might organize it better.
And I can always make it so like the main dot, like, the main drive is view-only, but there's a folder that people can put stuff into or edit on. So like, I can continue editing privilege, like, quote-unquote privileges as we go, um, with like editing privileges, but if there's like a quote-unquote Dropbox where anything you want to upload goes in there, I can make it a point to go in there and like organize it as it sees fit. So people can't, basically, so people can't fuck around and like start deleting stuff and whatever. Like, basically, if you upload everything to there originally, then I'll manage it and like put-drop it where it needs to be, or if other people want to like get on it too, I can edit it privileges. Um, so there's like quote-unquote admins to it.
I love that.
I, I think all of that, I think all of that sounds awesome, and I would just say like the same way that I'm doing with the Facebook group, to just keep turning people back to that, because I think it's just hard to get new habits moving, and I think like, you know, we all realize so much on GroupMe for those quick answers, that it's hard to slow down and put it in Facebook or go back to Facebook and look for it. We want that quick answer when we're studying, but if we can just do it to start to see like the long-term benefit of it, um, I, I kind of see the drive as the same thing. I can see it taking some time to get moving, but if, if maybe, you know, Mackenzie's, both of you, would like to like take ownership and just kind of keep reminding us to change our habits and keep driving back there, um, it sounds awesome to me. Um, and so can you take stuff that's already existing, like the email document, et cetera, and just put it there?
Yeah, there's a plus button where you can kind of just upload a document or a download that's saved to your device or somewhere else, and then it'll convert it right into a Google Drive, um, document.
Cool, um.